The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so our first item of business here today is that I have had a request to remove the approval of the minutes from the June 6 meeting from the consent agenda and move it to the very last item on our agenda today. So I would consider a motion to do that.
That'd be my motion.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So with that, I take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kip, uh, Blindberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to regular business. First item is item 10, to consider a motion to approve handbook changes related to pregnant and nursing employees affected for June 20, 2023. Carrie, good morning.
Carrie Diva from Human Resources. I am asking for your approval on two changes to our employee handbook. One is an additional section and the other is an edit to a current section. They both relate to pregnant and nursing, the mothers. We've recently reviewed our handbook language because of the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and the new Providing Urgent Maternal Protections for Nursing Mothers Act. I don't think either of the proposed changes really change our current practices. These are things that we've been doing, but rather they clarify procedures so employees are aware that they can request accommodations if needed during pregnancy and that there's also spaces available in our buildings for anybody interested in nursing.
Any questions for Carrie? All right, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 11.
The next item, I'm requesting discretion to be allowed to schedule health and dental insurance premiums through the year if certain conditions are met. For those of you who've been on the commission for a while, you probably recall that we haven't been in this position for quite some time. We were able to offer one premium holiday in 2022, but prior to that, it's been probably a good six years before that before we've been in this type of position. And this type of position is simply a situation where we have enough revenue that's come in and is being held in reserve to help pay out claim costs. Whenever we get a point where we know that we have enough to cover claims, some claims that have incurred but not yet reported, enough for situations where if we chose to end our health insurance plan, that we would have enough to close out administrative costs. When we know we've hit that threshold and are bringing in a little extra, which doesn't happen terribly often these days, we like to be able to offer health insurance premium holidays. Based on our current operating costs, I think it's safe to make sure that we have around $4.1 million in that reserve fund. We ended May at $4.9 million. So I'm asking for discretion this year to schedule health and premium dental holidays if our reserve fund has at least $4.4. That would be enough that we would still be able to offer that holiday and still have close to that $4.1 million threshold. I'm not asking for a specific holiday today. Rather, I'd like to see where we end June at and then just operate based on that $4.4 threshold going through the end of the year. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Karski?
I guess I have two questions, Carrie. What type of increase did we budget last year and are we budgeting this year for our premium?
That's a good question. I want to say 15% last year, but it might have been 10. 10?
10.
10% last year. We're doing 10% again this year.
Okay.
It's very difficult in the early part of the year to get a true handle on what our costs are going to be. And part of the reason we were conservative with the budget this year as well is we knew that we had some claim leg that was still going to be clearing. I'm feeling comfortable that by May, they should all be through or by the end of June, they should all be through. I don't know. I can tell you, I know we have a couple of high claims out there for the year. We'll have a much better handle on what we can do for insurance premiums by the end of the year.
You've done a great job. Even though you're not an actuary, you've quite filled the role quite well in forecasting and projecting. So you've done a great job with the with the health insurance plan. So when we take a holiday, obviously, the employees don't have a premium that they're paying out of their check that pay period, but the county also has a savings. So I think it's 260, is that the amount?
Yep, approximately $260,000 would go towards the general fund.
What does the average employee see? Do you know?
Oh, it depends on their insurance level. If I'm recalling correctly off the top of my head, and I didn't bring that with me, but if you're on family insurance, it might be savings of close to $300.
For that paycheck.
It can add up. A lot less, obviously, for employee only.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? I would just say that I think Commissioner Karski and I have been around. We've seen years where, you know, the last couple of years, we haven't done premium holidays, but I think we have been very because of Carrie's good management. I know she watches these numbers very closely and loses some sleep occasionally over them. We have had the opportunity to do premium holidays in the past, and I think that that shows to our employees that we're trying to provide the best benefit here. It's not like a profit center for us. We're trying to make sure that we have funds available to meet needs, but also we're not stockpiling cash unnecessarily. Is there anyone here on public comment for this item? Anybody who wants to give any public comment? Okay. Any further questions for Carrie? So this authorization would just give you this latitude through the end of the this fiscal year, 2022.
That's right, and only if the reserve fund, when we announce it, is at 4.4.
Okay. All right. Now, if there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
That would be my motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kiple?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 12, which is to authorize the chair to sign the Minnehaha County Mapleton Township Rural Action Infrastructure Funding Agreement. Jacob, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Morris, Highway Department. The Rural Access, Rural Access Infrastructure Program was implemented by the state of South Dakota a couple of years ago. It provides funding for townships and secondary county roads to replace small bridges and large culverts. Last year, we had three townships apply and were successfully awarded funding for this project. We, we have drafted, drafted, come up with an agreement for the townships to follow in order to meet certain criteria to make sure that the projects are well-built, and that's what you have before you is for Mapleton Township to construct two large, two culvert locations for a total of $38,000, whereas the Rural Access Fund that the county holds, the state funds would, would fund 80% of that, and then the township would be responsible for 20% of it. And with this agreement, it's, it's more or less modeled after the agreement that we, we go through with the state for our bridge improvement grants when we do those. This agreement is a little bit different, whereas it provides 50% funding upfront so that to help the townships flow of these projects as well.
Thank you. Questions for Jacob?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kiple?
Do we have a couple other townships that were in, on track with doing a similar set of projects? Yes, Valley Springs and Hartford. Hartford, I'll have their agreement this week, and that'll be on the next commission meeting and still waiting for, for Valley Springs. But in order to complete this agreement, they have to hold a township meeting as well so that they can provide a resolution in minutes. Sure. And one other is, do we expect a little bit more engagement from the townships going into next year? I know that they were kind of feeling it out this past year and didn't meet all the qualifications, but are you seeing some more engagement from the townships? Yes, there's def, there was, there's definitely more townships that are involved this year. The state made some changes to the rules to allow more people to, to qualify for the program. Made a little bit less stringent as far as how many taxes you had to enact, to actually, to actually qualify for this. And then there are definitely more townships within our county that have enacted those as well. Okay. Thanks, Jacob.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion. Move approval.
Go ahead. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 13, which is to consider bid results and award recommendation for the jail interior paint project. Mark Vins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Vins, Facilities Department. On June 6, we held a bid opening for the painting of the interior of the existing jail. This includes unit control areas, inmate day areas, recreation areas, 200 jail cells, and two dormitories. We received one bid, which was from Valhalla Painting LLC, and the total bid price was $412,000. I'm requesting the commission authorization for the chair to sign the contract with Valhalla Painting LLC for the interior painting of the existing jail. Any questions?
Commissioner Karski?
One bid, did we, or did you have an estimate before? Is the bid pretty close to what you were thinking it should be?
It's a little higher than what I had estimated, but what I didn't know how to estimate was the prep work. So all of the damage and stuff that's on the wall from the inmates, I didn't know how to estimate that. I didn't ask them, but I was a little low, not horrible, but.
Okay.
Yep.
So they're patching things as well as painting, not just painting over holes, basically?
Yep, yep. So there's a lot of prep work. There's oil spots on the walls and the ceilings from when they got the butter patties. They've got wet toilet paper and they throw that against the walls and everything. So they got fair amount of prep work before they can even get started painting.
Probably other stuff I don't want to know. So thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kiple?
How frequently do we do this?
This is the first time we've done it since the jail was built in '02.
Okay, thank you.
Any speculation about why you only received one bid?
Um, no, but I've, I've heard that from some of the local contractors in town that there's been some actually big construction projects where they didn't even receive a bid, so I was pretty fortunate to get at least one, so.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Any further questions from the commission?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 14, which is to authorize the commission administrative officer to approve owner change order to install gutters and canopies at the highway.
Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So in April, the county building committee reviewed some proposed changes to the highway facility, one of which was the addition of gutters on the north and south faces of the facility, and two was painting the canopies that are on the, over the doors on the facility. The contractors presented four options for the gutters and eight options for the canopies. The building committee recommended pursuing option number four for the gutters and option number eight for the canopies. So initially, just as some background why this even came to the building committee, when the project was being designed, gutters were not included in the final design as a cost-saving measure, and the canopies were painted with a stock color that ended up not matching the actual color of the facility. So the two proposed change orders in front of you, number 46 and 47, are totaling around $107,000, and this work would be estimated to be able to start in October, I believe, at this point.
Questions for Tyler? Mr. Karski?
I have just a comment. You know, when Commissioner Benning and I were on the building, I guess, liaisons for this, and we, you know, we tried to do it right, and we, we went without the gutters thinking we could get by and save $100,000, obviously. After this last winter, it was, it was a brutal winter. Nobody thinks of that on a 100-degree day, but it was an awfully brutal winter, snow and ice sliding off the roof, and this just makes sense for the safety of the employees as well as for the long-term this, you know, construction or long-term outlook for the facility. So I am in favor of it.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment on this item? All right, I know that we had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions when this was before the building committee, so no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second? Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to our 2024 budget follow-up. Susan, good morning.
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. Today, we just wanted to review the budget presentation and information about where we are at, at this time after our June 6 budget meeting. We will have additional conversation in July at at least two of the meetings. But today, we just want to kind of just do a briefing and also get some direction from the commission on how best to prepare for the July 11 meeting. So first, what I wanted to do is just kind of walk through the updated requested budget. So on June 6, you approved new positions. You approved some changes or budget increases for elected official pay as well as some changes to outside agency funding. So what you're seeing on the slide right now are just the two funds that had changes from June 6. So on the column on your left is general fund. We have increased total appropriations by $913,081. That brings the overall cash applied before ARPA or South Dakota Cares funding to 13.45%. At the bottom of your slide, you will see the, the itemization of that $913,000. The majority, majority of it is in the new positions. So just to remind you, you approved 18 new positions. Four of those were regular full-time FTEs for the full calendar year and equalization, public defender, state's attorney, and public advocate offices. And then additionally, there were 14 new jail FTEs with a mid-year start, planning for the Unit Control 3 expansion. And then the two outside agency fundings that you approved and discussed, elected official. The three on the bottom of your slide, I just wanted to highlight, there were two changes that were not discussed at the commission that had been brought to me from offices. One is the extension department. Their SESU contract came in a little bit higher than what they had budgeted, and since we're a very small department, we want to push that through as part of this, this through part of provisional budget, as well as IT requested an additional $5,000 to their budget. A few of the commissioners were involved in seeing that request from Monty for Human Services Conference Room Equipment. And lastly, that COSAP grant, as discussed last meeting, we were able to secure an extension through September 30 of 2024 for the COSAP grant. That shifts 75% of that FTE's dollars back to the COSAP fund, so that's why you're seeing the reduction in general fund for that FTE. And then on the right is the COSAP fund, and what you're seeing there is just the budgeted grant revenue as well as the same amount as expenditures. We'll just pause there and see if there are any questions.
Any questions for Susan at this point?
So as we move to the next slide, this is just the updated means of finance. A lot of numbers, we won't go through it. The only two columns on this slide that you've seen or that are from, different from June 6 is the general fund and COSAP funds. So those match the previous details that we had just discussed. Just to remind you, as part of what you're seeing on this slide, opt-out remains at 2023 levels for the general fund, so we have not increased opt-out as part of this at this time. Okay? So on this third slide is just an illustration of our cash applied, and we know, as, as in previous discussions, that we have significant dollars helping our general fund at this time related to grant funding through ARPA and/or South Dakota Cares. So as we discussed earlier, we have a cash applied rate of about 13.45%, which is roughly 11 and 1/2 million. But with the grant funds that we can use to help offset that of about 7.1 million, that brings us down to about 4.4 million. And with this scenario here on the left, what we are suggesting is a 3 and 1/2% cash applied target as we know that we need to begin preparing for that ARPA funding to expire. Just as part of our discussions, we wanted to show you what that number would look like. If you scroll down just a little bit, Trish, you'll see then we're about 1.4 million, 1.457 million short, which keeps us with that current amount of opt-out at about a 5% cash applied rate, 5.2% cash applied rate. And so that would mean that if you don't take any new opt-out, we're at about a 5.2% cash applied rate. Knowing that we have discussed the strategy of layering an opt-out to prepare for the ARPA funding expiring, I wanted to show you on the right what that would look like if you take 1 and 1/2 million dollars of opt-out. So that would be our existing opt-out that has already been approved, that we have capacity left on from 2019. That would bring us down to a 3 and 1/2% cash applied target.
Now, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner Karski?
Historically, a 5.2 cash applied rate is a pretty, it's, it's a very respectable cash applied rate.
Correct.
So the outcome, and I imagine, I kind of scrolled ahead a little bit, but do you have a different, are you showing the difference between the 5.2 and the 3.5 in future years, what the difference would be?
That really comes into the forecast.
Yeah.
And so what we have talked about is the need to, or the desire to streamline opt-outs in over the next couple of years so that we don't have a huge jump in opt-out in 2026 when the ARPA funding is, is done. In previous, in our previous June 6 meeting, we did an analysis and showed you on the forecast what that would look like if we don't take opt-out incrementally over the next couple of years to prepare for that. And that was about a $6.4 million opt-out that you would need to take in 2026 from a forecasted perspective to, to balance that, to have the funding necessary to, to take over for ARPA at that point. Knowing that a $6.4 million one-time opt-out or opt-out all at one time is a huge jump for taxpayers, we discussed the idea of layering it in over the next couple of years to help try to keep that more predictable. And so we can probably see that a little bit more visually on the next slide.
And we did a $6.5 million opt-out four years ago, but we, we haven't used that all, but you're saying 6.4, we would need all at once is what you're, instead of streamlining it in. So and the Financial Action Network is the one who, I mean, this is kind of following what the school board has done, and we had the school board finance director on our Financial Action Network as well, as well as many other CPAs, CFOs, and business leaders that really are the ones that this, this guidance is coming from them for our consideration.
Correct. You know, as part of our Fan Committee discussion, the idea of ongoing opt-outs was a big part of our conversation, and the recommendation to try to keep tax increases as predictable as possible and streamlined, so you prevent big jumps whenever possible, was part of that discussion.
Thank you.
Other questions? So good questions. Thank you.
So as part of budget, this is budget presentations on June 1 and June 6. You've seen these slides previously. And so I'm going to back up a little bit for those that maybe weren't at the budget meetings, just to give some background, knowing that people might be viewing it for the first time. So with our Fan Committee earlier this year, they had recommend that we not only look at current year, the next year's budget, but also have a five-year look forward and put together a forecast so that we can be better prepared as we move forward to not, not have big jumps in taxes, try to keep things more streamlined as we go forward. So this is a forecast and cash analysis. So the, the, the blue bar on the, the graph are our revenues. The orange bar are expenses. The green bar, as you go forward, is our opt-out. And you can see in this projection and forecast, what we have done is try to streamline the opt-outs in, through 2029. So you can see just that slight increase every year so that we're not having big jumps for taxpayers. The blue bar at the top is our cash. So knowing that we will need to be prepared for 2026 when that money is, the ARPA money is no longer available, getting prepared to that so that we can keep our cash at a decent space as far as keeping our levels for reserves and our unapplied fund balance at an acceptable level. Just to maybe a little bit more background on this, what this includes is your 2024 requested budget, as you've seen earlier. It also includes the full Unit Control 3 expansion in the jail. So as we have discussed in previous meetings, the jail is predicting the need to move into the vacant floor in the jail and have that fully occupied by 2028. So those expenses related to that expansion are all included in this. An estimated number through the end of this is about $4.7 million just alone for UC3 expansion. And then we've also budgeted about $250,000 of new positions every year. So that's a part of what you're seeing here. If you go to the next slide.
Can, before we leave this slide, can I just make a couple of comments or questions? So for folks, commissioners, we've had a chance to see this slide. Now, this is the third time, but for folks who haven't had a chance to look at it before, the reason that the revenues are so high in 2020, and a little bit in '21, but then in '22, is this ARPA money that you're talking about primarily, correct?
2022 is, would be ARPA as well as South Dakota Cares. In 2020, it was the first tranche of COVID relief dollars that came through the state.
Okay.
But all, all pandemic-related, so very much an anomaly as far as long-term forecasting.
And, oh, Commissioner Karski, go ahead.
I'll wait till you're done.
And you might have said this, I was, my brain was looking at this slide, but the blue line, when we talk about revenue, or talking about where our cash reserves are, I mean, there's a lot of things going on in this slide. We're talking about opt-out and smoothing tax increases for taxpayers by the use of opt-out, but we're also trying to keep our reserves at a level that the Fan recommended so that we have money to meet our, our ongoing expenses in, in the event of some major financial setback.
Correct. And as part of that is also the, the point that our rating agency indicated during our, our last financing, that they feel that if we had a dip in our unapplied fund balance of, where it would dip below 20%, that would increase or change our rating unfavorably, where we could see a downgrade. So that is something, although we don't have any immediate financings on the horizon, we definitely want to keep that in front of us as we forecast out so that we make sure to always stay in that range so that we don't have an impact down the road.
Which for an individual, it's like having a good credit rating. You want to have a good credit rating so that you can borrow money at a favorable rate.
Correct.
Commissioner Karski?
I guess I just want to clarify, you know, we talk about additional positions and you know, we're, most of these additional positions are correctional officers, they're public safety people, they're going to our prosecuting attorneys, defense attorneys, they're going to our court system, but most of them are in our jail. And, you know, we're not adding a ton of employees to the county payroll to fatten our budget that way. These are public safety employees that I think most citizens would understand the need for. I can't remember the exact number this year, but how many of our 12 are going to?
You approved 18 positions last week. 14 of those were in the jail
Okay.
and related to UC3 expansion with a mid-year start, but also knowing that that may be shifted back if the need is not there. And the other four, three of them were legal-related, state's attorney, public defender, and public advocate.
Yep.
The fourth one was an appraiser and equalization.
Yep. So, yeah, that's where the additional employees are going. We're not padding our numbers. This is for public safety.
Any other questions? All right, we'll let you keep going. You got a few more slides.
Yep, just a few more. So the next slide. Go one up. Yep. Just to summarize again, you've seen this slide before. Um, but maybe just for those that haven't seen it before, I'll walk through it. Um, what you'd seen on the previous graph is from 25 through 29 or is a forecast. Um, I don't have a crystal ball, um, so we had to put assumptions in there for inflation growth, um, payroll increases, et cetera. Um, so these are the assumptions that we use as part of that. Um, they are going to be off, we know that they're going to come in actually very different or hopefully not too far off. But, um, we wanted to be able to show you the assumptions that we put into that forecast. Um, on the bottom slide, the bottom half of the slide is a summary of opt out. So I'll just walk through that in a little bit more detail. Um, so for 2024, um, we have 14 million, $3,000 for existing opt out that's currently in their requested budget. If you support, um, the one and the three and a half percent cash applied target. Then that would mean that we would take an additional 1.5 of our existing opt out that has already been approved, but not yet levied. So that would bring our total opt out for 2024 to roughly 15.5 million. So then, as you move forward into 2025, um, keeping the opt out and balancing the budget with our cash applied targets. Um, we would take the remaining 622,000 of the existing opt out. And fully levy the full amount of that opt out passed in 2019. And then you would need to pass a new opt out for 1.278 million. So that bottom line are the new opt outs that you would need to have each year to balance your budget to keep that that forecast looking like you saw on the previous slide. Um, to also point out in 2027, you have an opt out that expires. So that 2.7 million in new opt out on that year is not only the current need, but it's also replacing that opt out for public safety that's expiring. So in total through 2029, the forecast shows about 9.8 million in new opt out dollars would be needed.
Questions about this, once again, lots of information, Commissioner Karski?
That you're not showing a, an opt out for 24 budget, I mean, that's been kind of a discussion item.
We are showing on in the forecast that you would at least take 1.5 million of the existing opt out. Um, what's what you're seeing on here would be the opt out that would be needed to be levied. So, um, part of what you'll have in a future slide is the discussion on a larger opt out and that you layer in over time. Or do you want to do small incremental opt outs? Um, those, that part isn't on here, this is just the amount that you would need to levy to balance the budget.
Okay, I personally am in favor of the more, the longer we can stretch it out, you know, according to the fan recommendations. That that's the, um, approach we take.
So I think one of the things that this slide helps to see, not graphically like we looked at before, but in actual numbers is. If we layer in opt outs to try to keep tax increases predictable. This is about how much with our crystal ball, we're projecting we would need, um, for opt out. And it keeps it at or around. Or under maybe to the $2 million mark, um, each year because we have that one existing opt out that expires in 27. All right, any other questions on this slide? All right, we can move on, thanks, Susan.
So the next section we wanted just to go through is just the opt out discussion. So, um, this is our our slide that you saw in our first budget meeting, just giving you, uh, just a recap of our current opt outs that we have levied. So we currently have the, uh, the top of the slide, you'll see the building fund opt outs of 1.4 million. Um, those we are not recommending or proposing that there's any change to that at this time. So under the general fund section, we have total general fund opt outs at this time that have been passed of 16,125,000. So as of right now, we have a little over 2.1 million in capacity left on that 2019 opt out, it's the line that is shaded. As you can see on the far right, um, we have layered that in as needed over the last five years. So for the first three years, for 2020 through 2022, we kept opt ups at the same level of 1.75 million. In 2023, knowing that we needed to begin preparing for that, those ARPA funds to expire, we did increase that. Um, and take some additional opt out in 23, um, to prepare for that. So that's when it went up to the 4.3 million. Um, so at this point, we still have about 2.1 million left on that existing opt out. That does not require anything other than you telling me to put that in the budget. It's already been approved, um, and the resolution has been done.
Two things going on here, you know, the existing opt out, keeping our cash applied lows so that we don't have this cliff. Plus the discussion of ongoing or continuing opt outs in on an incremental basis. So we really, we're talking about keeping the scales even, I guess, for lack of a better term. So we're not talking about one thing, we're really talking about two different things.
Yeah, we are, we are, I mean, we we know that we are to, the immediate thing in front of us is the 2024 budget. Um, but we also know that we need to be planning ahead. Um, we we know that the ARPA funding will be used up and we need to prepare for that.
So for purposes of the, um, commissioners' decision, I think our our two different decision items today are the items that Susan is particularly looking for some guidance for. And the commission office is looking for some guidance for is one, how much opt out do we want to take this year? Probably out of our existing opt out available because we have 2.1 available. Um, and then the second question is going to be going back to the fan and their recommendation that we look at. Taking opt out or or authorizing opt out the year before you actually need the opt out. So that you have predictability, um, opt outs are always subject to taxpayer referral. And so if for some reason, uh, taxpayers were not, um, supportive of the strategy that was being used in a in a opt out. Um, was referred and voted down, that you have another year to try to adjust your budget or or pass another opt out. And so those, so they are, there are a lot of things going on in this budget for sure. Um, and that's why Susan is so amazing in helping us walk all the way through this and think strategically, long term, and not just for next year. Because honestly, next year wouldn't be a problem, it would be, next year is pretty easy, it's gets a lot more, a lot harder, um, as we move forward. And so I think I'm going to let her go through those, the rest of her slides, and then we'll come back to those two decision points, okay?
So the slide is just essentially putting together, um, a couple of points for you to to think about as well as provide some direction on. Um, as we discussed, we have about 2.1 million left in our existing opt out that could be levied. Um, we are proposing at this time levying around 1.5 million. Um, just to help prepare us and try to keep that opt outs being smoothed in over the next couple of years to prepare for that expiration of ARPA funding. So as we, um, as Commissioner Bender indicated, that is something that we need some direction from the commissioners on as far as. If you were in agreement with that or what amount or what information would you like to see for the July 11th meeting so that we can be prepared for that? Um, and then the second point is just related to what the fan committee recommended. Um, their recommendation was to pursue the passage of additional opt outs while currently authorized opt out funds are available. So a couple of things for you to think about would be, do you want to consider approving a new opt out at this time? Um, if so, we could have a resolution prepared for the July 11th meeting for your discussion and and approval. Or just, um, review at that point. Um, opt outs, new opt outs would need to be approved by July 15th. Um, and then just the second bullet point under that section is just the strategy of smaller opt outs annually. Or if you like the idea of a larger opt out that you layer in over time like we did in 2019. So those are the two things for your consideration as you go forward. Um, and I don't know, Commissioner Bender, if you'd like to have more discussion on opt out or if you want me to go through this, the last slide related to the levy calculations.
Um, why don't we just go through the levy calculations and then we can turn around and and wrap up the whole discussion?
This is a a slide that we showed you on the June 6 budget meeting as well. Um, and a couple of things are going on here. Um, the first half of the slide is 2024 budget, um, showing you the first section is if opt out remains at 2023 levels. Um, the increase in taxes would be approximately $59 for a $300,000 home. A couple of points with that is we do not have preliminary abstract values finalized yet for 2019, for 2024 budget. So we know that number will change, um, but we have increased it by about $800,000 or excuse me, $800 million for 2024. Just so you have some increase in there, but it will likely be higher than that, which means if your values go up, your actually levies go down. Um, so we won't have the updated numbers for that section till later this summer, but we wanted to show you what that would look like. As you can see, um, we're just showing you the three main funds that the county controls. This does not include fire protection, library, your cities or your schools. So just know that it's just those three funds represented. The largest increase on on that number is the dollar for the bond redemption fund, which is related to the Juvenile Justice Center bond that was approved and closed earlier this year. The second section under 2024 shows you what that would be if you increased opt out by one and a half billion. So it goes up roughly $20 for a $300,000 home. And with this analysis on all of these, you're assuming a $300,000 home stays $300,000 in both years. And then what we did on the bottoms part of your slide is show you what 2025 would look like. If you had the one and a half million dollar opt out in 24 and then follow the path of what we have in the forecast for. For, um, opt outs and inflation and growth. So there's a lot of estimates on this slide, but we wanted to give you a general idea of where. Taxes taxes impact would be for a for a taxpayer.
Questions?
I just have one, just for clarity. So when we talk about the growth. Are we talking about the new construction or are we talking about the growth? You know, we assume, you know, your $300,000 house is now a $310,000 house. Is it the new or is it the combination of both?
That goes into the abstract values.
Correct.
The abstract values will will include not only new construction growth, but also market value changes. So the market value changes will impact your levy. It doesn't increase, we aren't allowed to increase taxes as part of growth related to the market.
So you're assuming a 3.2%. Growth rate on property values is kind of what your assumption is built around?
The 3.2% in 2025 would be new construction growth, not market value changes.
Okay, so no market value changes.
We increased about 800, 800 million in abstract values in 2025.
Okay, okay.
And that's because market value changes, we aren't allowed to change our levy based on market value changes. It just basically spreads it out.
Spreads it out.
Based on that market value.
Right, yeah.
That's part of our formula. For the good and for the bad. All right, other questions, Commissioner Kipley?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess I'd go back a couple sides, slides, just to. Maybe give my input on these questions that are being posed to us today. And I know. With respect to my colleague, Commissioner Benning, I I think we said we weren't going to make any kind of firm decisions without him. But I think just for the sake of staff having some guidance from us. Um. First one being, does the commission want to consider approving a new opt out at this time? I don't think even within our. Um, forecast, it doesn't call for needing a new opt out, uh, even if we would want to use the 1.5. We have that available to us. And I guess that goes into the second question. I guess I'm a bigger fan of passing smaller opt outs and just kind of being transparent with, here's the incremental. Change we're making each year rather than gobbling up, you know, $10 million at once and saying, trust us, we're going to parse this out over seven years. Uh, so that's, that's kind of the the camp I'm in there. I'm a little bit undecided still on the, uh, I know 1.5 million is a little bit arbitrary, just picking a number. Um, I guess I'm open to using some opt out dollars this year to help us level that. But then also, when we go down a couple of slides, the the tax levy impact this year, I think. If we're talking about layering that in for taxpayers, I think we've already, it by issuing the bonds and building the new JJC project, we've raised taxes this year. So I would just, some number between zero and 1.5 might be appropriate. Uh, but I'd have to maybe spend some more time with the numbers between now and July 11th to to see how we could better layer that in. But I think this, I appreciate all your work on this because I think this is definitely in the ballpark of of what I would be considering. So those are my thoughts for now.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Karski?
I'm looking for the slide here, um, hang on. You had one slide that showed, you know, the 3.5, the five, uh, or percent, uh, where'd it go? The scary thing to me was the future opt outs. Where in the heck did that go?
I believe it's, um.
As a percent, I mean, they're like in 26, and they're all above 10% when we look at our cash applied. Um, coming down the road.
We did in in 2026 and.
Slide number eight.
If you could go back, I think it's this slide here.
Correct.
Um, in 2026 and 2027, we do have in the forecast and and 2028 that we would. Increase our cash applied rate over our normal target. Um, as we've lowered it in a few years, we want to use up some of those cash reserves, um, to help streamline that in. Um, this is all forecasted, meaning that if things came in unfavorable to budget in in future years, we'd have to revisit that to see if that would work. Um, I, you know, the idea of taking the 10 and a half percent cash applied target is high. Um, I do think that as long as we are planning for it and and doing it with purpose, looking at the numbers. Knowing that down the road, it needs to be back down to that 8% after we get through this this transition period. I'm, it doesn't give me heartburn as long as the data supports it.
Yeah, and just for, and you can correct my interpretation of cash applied for the public. That might be interested in saying, what is this cash applied? I mean, that's, we're taking money out of our savings to balance our budget is what that cash applied means. So if you have money in your own personal budget and you had to take money out of savings to make your current budget work, that's what we're talking about.
Correct, and that's, and why we're proposing in the forecast that you do that is knowing in 24 and 25. You're putting a little extra away in preparation for that.
Yep.
Um, if you were to, um, not take the 1.5 million opt out for 2024 or say, let's just wait. At the end of 2029, you still end up with the same amount of opt out needs. So you're just pushing it down the road and putting in streamlining and not streamlining it in. You would be incrementing it in all at one time or in a shorter amount of time.
So. To kind of use Commissioner Karski's analysis or analogy, you know, if you're a homeowner, you're saving up this year because you know you're going to be short. You know, you're going to have short cash for some reason in the next couple of years. So you're saving this year so that you can use that money to pay your mortgage or pay what your your bills, your grocery bill, your utility bill, whatever. In the next couple of years. And so by taking the 1.5 this year. Um. While we recognize we may not need it necessarily this year, if the overall goal for taxpayers is to have a steady, predictable. Tax burden, and I I understand Commissioner Kipley's, um, statement about the fact that we are, we already have increased taxes some this year by the. Um, by the bond for the Juvenile Justice Center. Um, but at the same time, I think that you've factored that in in our analysis here that it. And when I talk to taxpayers and that's what the fans said, people do not want a huge jump in one year. Because businesses can't necessarily budget appropriately for that. Certainly taxpayers don't like that as a bad surprise in one year. And you tend to not remember the years when your tax rate is lower, but you certainly remember it when it jumps up. Um, you know, particularly if you're on a fixed income or something where you don't really have the ability to absorb that. And so from my perspective, I'm comfortable taking the 1.5 this year. having the higher cash applied in twenty-six and twenty-seven, and trying to keep that tax increase rate from, based on the general fund, at a, at a pretty, I don't want to say low, because it isn't low, but it's predictable. And I think that's, that's what I would like to see. I think that's what taxpayers would like to see.
And the other thing from a taxpayer perspective is we have a lot of taxpayers that have their taxes escrowed on their mortgage. And so those are often a one-year behind. So personally, I just got my notice from my bank that my escrow's going up because of that shortage. And so if you do a big jump in taxes one year, it will actually have impacts not only for the current year, but also how they do their funding and their escrows, and how the mortgages and their banks impact that.
Madam Chair?
Blainberg? Personally, I'm a big fan of budgeting, just in my personal life and financial planning. And so this idea of layering it in slowly, to me, seems just very financially responsible. So I appreciate all the work that you've done to make this easy for us to understand. And then I just would like to say, too, that most of our expenses are dictated to us by the state, most of the, the money that we spend. But personally, when we are looking forward to maybe a time of decreased income, when we would be saving ahead, we would also look at things like, what can we, where can we save money? And so I just want the public to know that there's not a lot of options for us. But of course, we're sometimes a little bit frugal here. So if we could, personally, we would look at things like, what subscriptions can we cancel? You know, maybe you go from two streaming services to one during a tough time financially. So I think it's good to know that we're not just increasing taxes, we're also looking at meeting just the basic public safety needs that we really need to, to, to keep up with the growth in our community and the, the changing issues.
For non-personnel-related expenses for the twenty-twenty-four budget, there was, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, just over seven-hundred-thousand dollars of increase from the revised twenty-three budget to the twenty-four budget request. And of that seven-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, a little over four-hundred-thousand was elections-related. So the non-personnel-related increases to the general fund budget were very, very small in comparison, with that major change being just that it's an election year and our cost increase during an election year.
Commissioner Kipley?
Madam Chair, just one other comment and maybe just feedback for Susan. In my mind's eye, another area of improvement for this would be maybe if we're, we're all in some consensus about layering this in. And I wonder if we could be that much more deliberate about the opt-out layering in. Because some of these numbers, I don't know, they, whereas I, I keep coming back to the Sioux Falls School Board has the, that laddering effect of they pick a number, and then the next year they pick that number plus some increment, and it's very logical, and I don't know if that makes some of the forecasting easier or more transparent, like this is what we plan on doing. Back to predictability for the taxpayers, they can almost count on what our opt-out in twenty-twenty-eight is going to be. It's going to be, if we do the one-point-five this year, it's going to be one-point-seven-five this year, the next year. So maybe, maybe for next time, or as we're considering this, some of those iterations on that, can we get into a rhythm with this so that we're not reinventing the wheel every time? I think this is a very, from what I've gathered, again, as a new commissioner, this is some of the most forward-looking, you know, having a five-year forecast and having a ten-year plan on some things. I think we're doing a good job looking ahead. That would just be my one piece of constructive feedback of could we plan that with the opt-outs themselves to be layered in, in a, I know, and then the thing too is that we have some opt-outs expiring. And so, so I know it's hard, it's easier said than done, so I put that out there. But then to that end, if we're going to do a new opt-out, it sounds like maybe not this year, but into the next year, we'd be doing a new opt-out, is that a ten-year opt-out, is that a twenty-five-year opt-out?
That's our next question that we're going to talk about.
Okay, yeah, so, so all of that fits together, because if some things are going to be expiring, how do you ladder that in to account for the expiring? So that's my only other comment, thank you.
All right, so first, to address the first question, what I heard was that at least three of us were comfortable with the taking one-point-five-million of the existing available to us opt-out and applying it to the twenty-twenty-four budget. Is that the general direction? Okay. So we have time before our July meeting, and if people have further comments or feedback to Susan, or to me, or to Tyler, or Tom, we can do that. But I think that's the general direction as far as the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Okay.
Then the next question that Commissioner Kipley did a nice job of leading us into is the question of whether we want to authorize a new opt-out this year in anticipation of what our needs are going to be next year. And Susan has, I don't know, it might have been that same slide, eight, has a projection for, you know, what opt-outs she's predicting that we might need in order to smooth this out. And that shows, on that particular side, it shows that we could use the remaining six-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand of opt-out next year. That's the existing opt-out, and that we would need a newly authorized opt-out of one-point-two-seven-eight million in order to have the amount needed for next year. And the question is, I think on the table, from what I understood of the FAN, and I had to cut to get remedial education on this, was that the FAN was suggesting, similar to what the Sioux Falls School District does, that we authorize an opt-out the year before we know that we're going to need it, so that it's available to us. And, and part of that question would be, do we want to do an opt-out this year that we know we aren't going to use at all this year, so it won't really affect taxpayers this year, but it will be available for our use next year? And if so, what would that amount be? Would you want to do just what we need for next year? Or do we want to do more what we, as a commission, have done historically? You know, authorize a bigger opt-out that we just use as needed? So those are the two questions I'm kicking out to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Karski?
So nine-million-eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand additional opt-outs through twenty-twenty-nine are anticipated based on Susan's crystal ball that she doesn't have. That's roughly one-point-nine-million, plus or minus.
Yeah, we were trying to keep opt-outs annually under two-million.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, based on that, I, I'm all in favor of the math and averaging it out and spreading it out that way. So that would be the direction I would prefer to go, is to take that nearly ten-million and spread it out over six years instead of five years, right? So it would be, instead of take, or we would take one in twenty-four, or authorize one, not use it, but authorize it. And so, I mean, then it's one-point-five-million over six years instead of one-point-nine-million over five years? Am I doing that right?
Well, you have to remember that next year, if we utilize the six-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, that will be levied. And then if we also...
But I'm talking about the new opt-outs.
Right.
On that, on screen eight or slide eight. I mean, if you average those all out from twenty-five through twenty-nine for those five years, that's almost, well, it's one-point-nine-million a year.
It's going to be roughly under, just under two-million dollars a year, knowing that twenty-twenty-eight, you'd be passing your opt-out that you need for twenty-twenty-nine. And then twenty-twenty-nine, you'd be passing the opt-out you need for twenty-thirty.
Yeah, but if we take one, if we authorize one this year, but we don't utilize it till twenty-twenty-five, it gives us that security of knowing that it's there if we need it. And I'd rather authorize the one-point-five-million instead of going down the road and saying, well, this year, one-point-three-million, then two-point-one-million, then two-point-seven. I'd rather level it out over six years in anticipation of that need and that crystal ball being right.
Other comments? So what I hear Commissioner Karski saying is, instead of authorizing one-point-two-seven-eight this year, he would be in favor of authorizing one-point-five-million this year, and voting on that on July eleventh.
Correct.
Comments?
We're always working a year ahead, is what that amounts to at that point, then.
Just to make sure I understand that, so you're, you're saying in the twenty-twenty-four, we would, new opt-out would be one-point-five?
Yes.
In addition to...
Using the one-point-five that we're going to be taking.
Yeah, it's very confusing, that's why I'm trying to break these out into two questions. So we already authorized the direction to, to the auditor's office to use an exist, the existing opt-out and only use one-point-five-million dollars of it for this year. So now we're moving on to another question. And that question is, do we want to authorize and vote for a new opt-out at our July eleventh meeting? That opt-out would not actually be used for the twenty-twenty-four budget, but would be available for the twenty-twenty-five budget next year? That's the question on the table. And Commissioner Karski's suggesting that he would be in favor of not just doing one-point-two-seven-eight, but doing one-point-five.
Well, that would be the following year, then.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure, yeah, that you, but we would authorize one-point-five on July eleventh, with the understanding we wouldn't actually utilize that money until next year, when we're doing the twenty-twenty-five budget. Similar to how we did a big opt-out in twenty-nineteen, but we still have two-point, whatever, two-point-one-million dollars of that left.
Would it be possible to have Susan create a slide or a spreadsheet with those projections, just so we can look at?
That is on the slide. If you look on the new opt-out needed, it would just, instead of having one-point-two-seven-eight in the twenty-twenty-five, it would be one-point-five-million, and then it would adjust slightly in the years going forward.
Yeah, it would be about one-point-five-million for all of those years instead of...
Well, it's got to be more than one-point-five in all of those years.
I'm just curious what that does? I'm not good enough with math to figure out how the cash applied would change.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't change the cash applied.
That we would continue with the three-point-five, the five-point-seven-five, and the ten-point-five?
Yeah, now my, the way I'm proposing this...
For simplicity's sake, let's just suggest we do the one-point-two-seven-eight this year, so that would not change that slide at all. And then next year, we would propose to do a two-point-one-million. Does that make sense?
You're moving everything, one column to the left, is what you're saying.
Right, but we're not levying it, we're just authorizing it. So it doesn't affect taxpayers until the year you actually levy it.
Okay.
What this slide is showing you is what you would need to levy, to make, make the numbers work.
Okay, thank you.
And, and ultimately, the, the amount that you choose to put opt-out in for twenty-twenty-four budget, that really can, can change up until final budget in September. We do have to do a provisional budget by the end of July, and have, and then that is published as well. But then we come back for budget hearing in September, and, you know, you could say, you know, let's put one-point-five in the provisional budget, but then as part of, between provisional and final, you can change your mind and say, let's just only do a million. The only thing that has to be decided by July fifteenth is if you want to pass a new opt-out. We will come back by the end of July for you to approve provisional budget, but you still have opportunities to change it between provisional and final.
Yeah, so it is very confusing, because there's a lot of different things that we're talking about. And actually, the question on the table right now about whether we want to authorize a new opt-out on our July eleventh meeting is something we really haven't done before as a commission. We haven't, we haven't specifically authorized an opt-out, knowing we didn't need it that year at all. I don't, to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever done that. But doing it is trying to adopt the strategy that the FAN committee recommended, that the Sioux Falls School District has used somewhat successfully. And it's kind of twofold, in that it allows for predictability, and it also allows for predictability for taxpayers, predictability for the commission, that, you know, that's available. Commissioner Karski?
Just to add, I guess, maybe some of the murkiness comes from new opt-out needed, maybe an additional line that says, new opt-out approved below that, so that we can see the approved versus the needed and carry it forward. So that, because that's what I'm really talking about, is, you know, approving opt-outs that aren't needed until the next year, as you are clearly saying. So, you know, the, the need versus the approved and not used.
Yeah, so we're really looking at authorizing the new opt-out needed line in the year prior to the need.
Yep, yep.
I think I'm, Madam Chair, I think I'm open to that. I think if we're going to be using up opt-out in twenty-twenty-four, we probably have to authorize future opt-outs to get onto that FAN's recommendation, because if not, if I'm reading this chart right, we'd go into twenty-twenty-five with only six-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand available to us, and therefore at the mercy of making a decision in that budget year that we need something, and if it would get referred and knocked down, that's what the FAN is telling us to work one year ahead on, to give ourselves that room, that runway. So I think if we follow our own logic, we have to at least consider some amount on July eleventh.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? So if, with that direction to auditor's office, are you guys comfortable with changing, or adopting what Commissioner Karski was suggesting, that that opt-out be prepared at a one-point-five-million dollars, with the understanding that that would adjust the slide slightly for how much we'd take in future years? Anybody that's uncomfortable with that? Maybe that's a better way to ask.
Oh, I think that'll get us in the ballpark, so I'm comfortable with that.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay, so I will include a one-and-a-half-million opt-out in twenty-twenty-four budget from the existing opt-out that has not yet been levied. And then we will prepare the opt-up, you know, if it's a resolution or what the paperwork is, to get that ready for your review and consideration on July eleventh.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask if there's anybody that wanted to speak on public comment on the budget. You're welcome to come forward.
Bob Colby, I wasn't expecting myself to come forward at this time, but I had forgotten how bruised my gray matter could get when listening to the budget going on here, and noticing that the only elected officials that actually do budgeting are the county commissioners. Legislators don't, they get a budget presented to them, the governor has minions prepare it, the city, the mayor has minions prepare it, and the council members approve it. But one of the things that didn't come up was the bank franchise tax. I don't know how that plugs in, if it does anymore. You don't have to deal with the personal property replacement tax, because Janklow took that away. And I see, because you're doing opt-outs, that the legislature still has you under the guise of three-percent inflation or whatever is the, the smaller the number, so you're always backing up. But as I said, I had, you were using terms this morning, I'm glad I don't have to deal with today.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, any further direction for the auditor's office? Thank you very much, very helpful. All right, so that takes us to item sixteen, which were the minutes from the June sixth commission meeting that got pulled off of consent agenda. Public comment on this item? There's, I think, maybe two of you, go ahead and come on up, you guys come up and... Good morning.
Morning. Both of these work?
Yes.
Chad Ellsworth?
And I forgot to mention earlier, there is a sign-in sheet for folks speaking at public comments. So before you leave today, if you could just sign in over there, that'd be great.
I'm speaking upon the CO2 votes that were taken on the sixteenth, or on the sixth of the month, and speaking in regards to removing and reversing them to the Planning and zoning commission for final determination. And the reasons I'm doing that is that, as, as per in your agenda here, anything that comes up that's controversial, or non-controversial, controversial, and is out of order as far as the codes, can be brought up in session, and here I am. The, the authorities for the... The, the authorities for this, the requirements and the codes and regulations may be, may be used to remove from the regular agenda, to the regular agenda. And what I'm trying to do is, is point out the, the problems that were involved with that. To that, to that point, I do have a, Madam Chair, I do have a point of order.
Okay.
Madam Chair's failure to timely excuse herself's honor before the May 23rd proceeding cannot be remedied by abstaining for same on June 6th and simultaneously chairing a continued May 23rd hearing. Accordingly, I believe your conduct was prejudicial and will bias your decision on this request. I'd like to point out the Minnehaha County Rules of Procedure 2.1, general conduct. No com, no county commissioner shall use or attempt to use their official position to secure a special privilege, benefit, or exemption. The state code, SDCL 6117, official prohibited from discussing or voting over an issue if conflict of interest exists. I, I want to point out that the, on May 23rd, you were absent without notice and all, oh, I'm sorry. And at the same time, all the CO2 companies appeared as opponents. But when you appeared on June 6th, all the CO, all those CO2 companies did not appear. And, and, and that was, the commissioners went on to, including you, to advocate for the pipelines in their absence. At approximately 30 minutes and 11 seconds on your June 6th video, your statement was, my goal is not to shut down pipelines, and that indicates some bias. And you're in violation of your oath, given January 5th, 2021. By Judge Power, I will faithfully and impartially discharge all my duties. I want to refer to the further, the, the use and weaponizing of SDCL 7818, tie vote for commissioners, of which you deferred to, to the time you were there. And, and to show that there were some, some errors involved with those meetings. The one that you abstained, you abstained with on the 6th, and the one that you you came into on the, on the, on the 6th of the month, 523 is what it meant, is where you abstained.
Mr. Hollingsworth, your time is about up. Are you about done with your comments?
I've got just a couple more minutes.
No, you have three minutes for public comment.
Okay, uh, that's pretty hostile.
That's what our procedure is, sir. That's just what our procedure is.
Oh, where, where is that written down?
That is the procedure that we utilize.
I wasn't given any notice about a time limitation.
I'll give you a couple more minutes if you don't want two more minutes.
Yeah, involved, involved with, this is on the point of order here. I'm asking you to recuse. That you've got a, a law here, a general order law, 2.1 in your Rules of General Conduct. No county commissioner shall use or attempt to use their official position or any property or resource which may be within their trust to secure a special privilege, benefit, or exemption, which I believe you did that when you did not recuse, did not abstain, did not notice anyone of your absence. The meeting that you, that you did walk into and prefer, and abstained from, and the meeting on the 6th, has, show, you're, you're on 6, 6117 of the CDL code. Official prohibited from discussing or voting on issue if conflict of interest exists. And when you abstained and then went on and went on to the votes on the CO2 there, I believe you were biased by that. You, your meetings that you did call to order, you did not call to order, you just convened. There was no call to order in either the 23rd meeting or the, or the 6th. No call to order. There was a, a statement by, in the record that there was a convening. And so you were not asked to answer or call to order to the, in those meetings. I believe that's a, that's a problem. The regular meeting is statutized under 4.2 of your Minnehaha County Rules of Procedure 421. Regular meeting shall mean the convening of a quorum. There was no quorum called. I'm going to get to the, the main thing here.
Yeah, you've got one minute left, sir.
Okay, you've got one minute. The basic problem with using 7818 as weaponizing it to get, get your absence to where you could still proceed and still rule, govern over the June 6th meeting that you attended, was, is covered in, in 5.2 of your Rules of Procedure. And it definitely states that you're, you're, the chair is permitted to vote on all questions unless the chair has identified a conflict of interest. Please recuse from this proceeding.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else for public comment on the minutes? There's somebody else here for public comment. Thank you.
I, I don't believe I've ended.
Bob Colby, I was going to give you a little history background from Sioux Falls. Many of you, I don't think any of you really remember the oil spill or the petroleum spill between the Renner Corner and about a half mile east. I happen to have been on the committee that was convened by the EPA in order to deal with that particular oil spill. That group had the Minnehaha Conservation District, Minnehaha County Commission. It had the East Dakota Water Development. It had dirt and water, and it had the state's attorney, general's office. Anyhow, 20,000 gallons of petroleum product were spilled. They were land farmed and all that, and we were, the group was taken to Tulsa and ordered ballyhooed by Williams Pipeline and all that sort of thing. Anyhow, coming back, we were kind of trying to figure out what we could do for the benefit of Minnehaha County, the people of South Dakota, to remediate some of the problems that Williams had caused. The idea was fostered that we would have them put in a double-walled pipe carrying the petroleum product, essentially from Ranberg School to Midway Station, uh, filling station. I mean, that's the area that would be the Big Sioux Aquifer from the West Bank to the East Bank. And we were dealing with that, and we had thought that was a good thing, and we could, therefore, we could alleviate any problem. If the pipeline burst, it would be contained in another pipe. We also thought it was a good idea maybe to include Sioux Falls, the city. And so we invited them to be part of the committee. Lo and behold, we were, had an end run when the mayor called all of the people together and had a news conference saying that he had settled with Williams Pipeline. We were given forewarning of this by the EPA attorney, saying that they, Williams Pipeline and companies like that would come, and they would try to divide and conquer, which it was. So today, the pipeline going across the Sioux Aquifer is not double-walled, and that was all because of a certain mayor in Sioux Falls. That certain mayor is now on the Public Utilities Commission. And you can see where a person of my nature, who was on that committee with all the rest of them, is not really enthusiastic about any pipeline projects that may be coming before the PUC. So we all have times when we deal with other elected officials, and we determine whether or not they are trustable. And I would just say, let the buyer beware.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on the minutes from the June 6, 2023?
You entertain a motion?
Uh, if there's no other public comment on those minutes, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so now this takes us to opportunity for public comment about an item that was not on the agenda today. Scott Anderson, hello.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, planning director. Today, I just wanted to give you a quick update that our GIS aerial photography is now the alive, the most recent aerial photography, which was shot on April 10th, is on our website and available to the public. I just wanted to let everyone know that it's available, and it shows the most recent conditions on the ground. Just to recap, we shoot new photography every three years, so our, our last, our old photographs were from three years ago, and if you think about that, that's about 200 new houses and over 1,000 new accessory buildings that are now updated on our aerial photography. And that GIS information is used by a host of different departments in the county, the Highway Department, Equalization, our office, the public. So just happy to have that updated and just giving, letting you know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else today for public comment? Hello?
Good morning. Teresa Staley, Sioux Falls. I'm here in reference to the petition issue. And I'm so grateful that we're back to where we were. So grateful that we still have the opportunity to engage with the public by the door. It was the right thing to happen. I'm out there this morning, and of course, you know, that whole energy isn't just about petitioning, it's about visiting with the public. So today, I'm out there passing out the old Dakota Scout newspaper, started by two Argus reporters. I'm passing this one specifically out because I have an article in there, as does Counselor Alex Jensen, point, counterpoint about the water and sewer rates that they're going to be increasing tonight at the city council. 22%, I believe, sewer, 18% water. And the PUC just had a verdict at the beginning of this month saying, we aren't giving XL energy, the 18% they wanted. We're going to be giving them 6% instead. So to me, the PUC did the job for the public. I'm encouraging the, the city council to do the same thing. It's not the right time to raise rates. I'm also passing out city council information. I can do the same thing for the county. Because we need to encourage people to be engaged with our elected officials, because you are the servants of the people, every person. The reason I came up today is because I was just down there, and I've been down there many, many times. And as I said, when I came here on June 6th, please enforce the policy you already have. And one of the things on the policy is that you don't block the doors, and you show respect. I was just down there, and that wasn't happening. One person was on the side talking to a citizen, and another person from the other side came over and started to argue and make comments in front of the door. So I took it upon myself, and Leah, I hope you don't mind, but I said to them, we need to be standing back. This is the policy. Do not block the door. So I do think it would be good to have some kind of, and maybe it's up there, I didn't look, but to reiterate that over and over, that when you're, we're going to be respectful, stand, do not block the door, and you, if someone's talking to a petitioner, you don't come over, excuse me, and start, you know, harassing or interrupting. Even if you don't, you're passionately against that issue, you need to show respect for both sides. So I just wanted to tell you that I, I did say something to them, and I'm going to be down there today, hopefully later, and I'll continue to ask everybody to have respect, because this is a privilege. It's a wonderful thing. But I'm so grateful that, that what you, apparently you don't understand as a group, because you went along with this, this energy to move people back to that parking lot thing. And I don't know if any of you have ever collected a signature. I saw Dean Karski walking around at the Sidewalk Arts Festival when you were running for county commission with the sign on your chest, so you were trying to, you know, engage with the public. But being out there and getting signatures is a big deal. And it's a privilege, and it's a wonderful thing. So I'm so grateful that you're not going to be pushing the energy into the parking lot, because that was the wrong place to go. So have a wonderful day. God bless you. I pray for you all. God bless you, Dean. Amen.
All right, is there anybody else for public comment?
We're not on the agenda. You may remember that when the public safety building down here, the police, and the PD and the SO, a certain mayor by the name of Gary Hanson wanted to put the PD, the police department, over by the IV on East 10th Street. And the county gave to the city all of the property that now has the PD on it, so that they would move down here. Everybody wanted to be there except for the mayor. So we brought that all down here, so this is a kind of a one-stop shopping center. But the city, your brothers and sisters there, have recently okayed that the state offices to serve the people here in Minnehaha County would all be out at the Dolly Farm. Which, okay, that is hard for people to get to, because everybody is going to be coming down in this area for the city, the county, the police, the, all of the support systems, the attorney, the, the public defender and all that. When we have tax-exempt property down here, where you could put the same structures and vertical, and then still serve all of the people, what they are doing, what the city has done, is given 13 acres to the use by the state, which will have no property tax going to the schools, and the 25% that would go to the city and the county. Plus, they're taking out a major, what would you call it, business, off the tax rolls for sales that would generate income through sales tax for the state and the city on that same 13 acres. When it could be somewhere down in this area and be serviceable to the people who have needs to use the buses that come to somewhere close to here, and people could walk to it, the bus service to the Dolly Farm is minimal, if it exists at all. So maybe you might leverage the mayor and the other city councillors to say, hey, why not come down here? All the city, all the state offices don't have to be in one building, because you go to Pier, not all the state offices are in one building in Pier. And the city has a parking lot that could have a state office built next to it to service the people of Minnehaha County and area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? It's an item that's not on the agenda. All right, takes us to commissioner liaison reports. Are there any commissioner liaison reports? Commissioner Karski?
Tomorrow is the district meeting for Southeast District Counties down in, hosted by Union County in Beersford. I encourage my fellow council commissioners to attend. I know other elected officials will be going. We will have something on the agenda as far as. We will have something on the agenda as far as legislation, proposed legislation, that we want to go through the right process up through to the state convention. So if you can make it tomorrow, that would be great. I do plan on being there. Thank you. Tomorrow's Wednesday. It'll be Thursday. Thank you. Thank you, auditor.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Kipli?
Manager, I'd just thank my colleagues for gathering a quorum. Was that last one day? My days are mixed up too, Commissioner Karski. But we, we gathered for our Highway Department issue. I know we had kind of a quasi-emergent issue arise, but I think that all went well and got the change order and, and got the work going on that issue. So appreciate my colleagues that gathered a quorum as I was busy in clinic at my new day job, so I was able to skip that one. So appreciate that. And then just a note on planning and zoning. I know next Tuesday, we do have, we will have a joint meeting with the city. So making sure that that's on everybody's radar and calendars. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Commissioner, go ahead.
I just have a brief update.
Sorry.
I was able to visit the Family Visitation Center last week and just wanted to bring up the work that they're doing there and the service that they are providing for families that have needs in those areas. They're, they service a large number of supervised visits every month and are really doing a great job. I know we support them, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. All right. And I would just note that last Thursday was Carol Muller's last day. She retired, and we were able to have a really fun sendoff for her. But I just wanted to publicly thank her for her years of service as a commissioned administrative officer. We all have benefited, all of us that live here in Minnehaha County and around the state by her service over the years. We're in very good hands with Tom and Tyler now, but we do miss her. This is her first meeting where she's off to greener pastures. But I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention it. So I, I'm hoping she's not listening to us right now, however, so.
Yeah, we put her out to pasture.
All right, that takes us to non-action commission discussion. Is there any non-action commission discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess. We do have an executive session immediately following the commission meeting.
Move to recess.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Why don't we convene in about five minutes next door? Thank you.